This evening is on an important topic. It's an ordinance on downtown urban renewal plan amendment. City manager?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll turn it over to Sarah and her team.
Okay. Well, we're going to start off with just a short presentation of where we've been on the topic, and Amanda's going to do that, and then we'll just open it up for discussion.
Good evening. In March, you started the downtown urban renewal plan amendment process, which was necessary in order to keep urban renewal as a funding option for the four downtown improvement projects that you identified. In May, you gave direction on specific aspects of the plan.
Please stand by.
Yeah. Was this beyond? Or just makes sense. Good catch. Better than slice.
I will infect.
Thank you. It's mostly for those watching from home in the audience, because I think you all have copies of it.
We'll be right back. Technical difficulties. It's Monday, right? I say we start this day over. Anybody with me?
It's too late. I don't want to have to start. Long past the ground.
Yeah, but you can never get too much of that movie still.
Amanda's going to give a presentation on the WD-830 series projector. There you go. Oh, there we go.
Welcome to Congress.
Thanks.
All right. So in May, you gave direction on specific aspects of the amendment for your review. That revised proposed amendment is the focus of today's work session. I'll provide a quick recap of where we've been, the direction you gave on May 25th, and the revised proposed amendment. You'll have the rest of the work session for discussion. The ordinance is prepared for action today. In December, you requested a work session on fiber and park blocks and funding options. You met four more times, discussed funding options, added the Lane Community College former downtown center project, and requested two funding strategies: downtown urban renewal and an alternative to urban renewal. In March, you started the amendment process and requested individual work sessions on the four projects, which happened. As part of the amendment process, we solicited comments from three main groups: taxing districts, the planning commission, and the public. May 23rd, you held a public hearing, and May 25th, you reviewed the comments and gave direction. Let's review the main features of the requested revisions. The four projects remain in the plan, which would make them eligible for you to use urban renewal on, and those are the creation of a high-speed fiber network, a permanent improved space for farmers' market, park blocks and open space improvements, and redevelopment of LCC's former downtown center. You revised the spending limit to $18.7 million. The boundary expansion is updated to be the east park block area and a smaller portion of the city hall block that would facilitate potential improvements to the east park block, the Willamette to Willamette initiative along 8th Avenue, City Hall Plaza, and a farmers' market backup plan on the eastern half of the city hall block. Lastly, council added a prohibition against using urban renewal for the city hall building or for a parking lot on the eastern half of the city hall block. The revised proposed amendment was in your materials for today. It has the four projects, and that's in Section 600 of the plan, Council Pages 21 and 22 of your packet. No substantive changes were made since the March draft. The spending limit is $18.4 million, and that's on Council Page 26 of your packet, Section 1400 of the plan. This is lower than directed by council at the May 25th work session because we calculated project delivery administration based on the lowered project spending that you requested, which brought the total to $18.4 million. And that's in the revised proposed amendment. If you want to use the $18.7 million, we have that prepared as well. The map of the revised boundary expansion is on Council Page 28 of your packet. The prohibition against funds for a city hall building and parking lot is on Council Page 21 of your packet. That's Section 600A, the first paragraph, last sentence. We've also added a community engagement component that would occur before you would approve project spending. That's on Council Page 21 of your packet for the farmers' market and park blocks and open space projects. That's Section 600A. And Council Page 22 of your packet for the LCC project. That's Section 600C of the plan. Community engagement wouldn't apply for the fiber project, which already had public input as part of the Eugene Community Broadband Strategic Plan. So let's briefly walk through the engagement and approval process. If you take action to amend the plan, you would make whatever projects are in the plan eligible for urban renewal funds, and you would have this outline of a process that would follow. We would do community engagement and project scoping. Council would meet to review the results and the funding options, then hold a public hearing on the specific project and how it should be funded. Council would review again and could decide either to not implement or could move forward with the project. Then you would select funding sources, which could include urban renewal funds or not. That would then go through the budget process, which includes public hearings. The revised proposed amendment includes your requested changes. We're prepared for you to take action today, and we're here to answer your questions.
Okay. Opened up for discussion. Questions? I'll start first. Thank you.
You know, it's really hard to know exactly where to start with this. It's so messed up, in my opinion. Urban renewal was originally conceived in 1947 to address slum and blight conditions. We have no slum and blight conditions downtown anymore. We've had urban renewal for 48 years. If this plan gets amended and adopted as proposed, it will run till FY '28. That'll be 60 years. It's already the longest-running urban renewal district in the history of the United States. I don't think we need it anymore. If we let it terminate at the end of the calendar year, like we're supposed to, it frees up a million dollars a year, every single year, that can be spent in other parts of town that could use public investment. I'm specifically thinking of Bethel, Transong, Howie 99. The list goes on and on and on. There's projects in every neighborhood that this money could be used for. Downtown is not blighted. And another thing that urban renewal projects were very important in establishing were with housing. There's no housing provisions in this. We have a really big need for affordable housing in town. We all know that. Affordable housing and Work 4000. There's nothing here. To regard any part of downtown as blighted is really a stretch. You really have to stretch your imagination. I mean, we're calling the staff report college, calling the city hall lot, the parking lot for the city hall. It used to be that is a blighted area? Please. We created that blight. That's a stretch. That's pushing it. Basically, all these things kept getting tossed into the plan. So now we have a solution in search of a problem here. That's what I think. We all know that every one of these four projects can be paid for with other means. And I mentioned Ted Wheeler, Portland's mayor-elect. He used to be the Multnomah County Treasurer. He said TIF, Next Increment Financing, is a funding source of last resort. You only use that if the project really and truly would not be built or the project done as long as there was no other way to solve the problem. That's when you use TIF. And we're not doing that here. We're using it. You know, we're going back on our promise to the voters. None of these projects will increase the tax base. None of them are geared for, you know, business or private property that's going to pay taxes. None of these projects will.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Mike?
Thank you, Mayor. What I really appreciate today is, as I look around, I can't remember the last time I've seen this many people for a work session. Now, for a Monday night meeting, that's one thing, but for a work session, this is an awful lot of stakeholders in one room and folks excited about our downtown, and I'm happy to see it. Back in, I think, I might be wrong about this, but I think '08, when we had the proposal for the OPUS development of the big plan to redevelop downtown, our community said very loudly and clearly, "No. We want to do this incrementally. We don't want to do it all with one big fell swoop." And I think this council took that to heart. I think that's what's been worked on for years now, and it's working. And this is the next phase. This is the next incremental piece of that same effort that's been going on for years to revitalize our downtown, and it's working. And I'm happy that we're at a place where I think we're ready to take that next step and to move this to a place where we're not quite finished yet, but we've come a long way, and we're doing it as the people wanted us to do. And I think it's a good next step. So I'm happy to support this.
There. There's the red, and then Counselor Zelenka. Round, second round.
Yeah, I agree with Counselor Clark's statements. I was very impressed and still am with the strong outpouring of public support that we've seen for us to take this step. I've been surprised, frankly, given the past history of the public's reaction to urban renewal. And I do recall, I was a relatively new voter to Eugene when that one giant project was proposed, and I voted against it and was really glad the rest of the community did. And then I think what the city has done since then has demonstrated a very smart strategic approach to using urban renewal as a tool, to be selective, and we've created a downtown that reflects our unique community and our unique values, and that really reflects, I think, Eugene in a way that that prior project would not have. I believe, although there may be alternative sources, I believe this is the most rational approach to funding these projects. They won't be supported through private funding. Continuing the urban renewal won't impose any new taxes on taxpayers or ask them to pass a new tax. And frankly, I have not found the arguments against it to be very compelling. To me, the age of the district doesn't seem relevant if it's still a useful way for us to continue the revitalization of downtown. Some opponents have even tried to say that our downtown revitalization efforts have been a failure, which seems to fly in the face of very tangible evidence that it has been successful. But there is still more to be done. Maybe not a lot more. Maybe this is the last pieces. But I think they are important enough, and I think they are valuable enough, and we have seen demonstrated support from the public for us to use urban renewal to fund these projects. So I'm pleased that we are in the position we're in. I do have a question. I had an opportunity to meet with President Spildey from LCC, and I am a little concerned that we might have been shortchanging the contribution to the LCC project. So I wanted to discuss that a little bit. So my question is, in terms of the cap that we're raising it to, at this point, we're not delineating, or are we delineating, specific amounts to specific projects? And is there room within that funding cap to shift funds around between projects in the future?
As part of the report, there are places where it identifies the estimated amounts that the council has said for LCC. It's this amount for fiber. It's this amount. So if you knew that you wanted, for example, to add half a million, a million, whatever amount it was, to LCC and have it come from a different category of project, that would be a pretty easy change to make. It would be an amendment to this, so you'd want to make that after the main motion is put on the table before the vote. But if you do that, we can help walk you through exactly which parts of the plan or the report that we would want to change.
And then similarly, if I wanted to propose raising the whole amount by another million, that would be the same process?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
I guess my question would be, could council choose to just say this amount and these projects under that amount and not designate specific amounts for each project at this time?
Correct. And the plan doesn't, the plan itself doesn't actually designate amounts. Those are designated in the report that accompanies it as background. So you don't have to change them if the council decides you don't want to do that.
All right. Next up is Counselor Zelenka.
I had a question about that in particular. In the massive volume that we got, on Page 49, which is part of the report, there's a table, Table 5, List of Project Activities and Cost ranges. And I'm wondering about the spending rules associated with this table and how does it govern, given what you just said, plus also their ranges? And is it possible to shift monies around within the ranges? And how does this, what is the effect of this table? Does it govern us?
This identifies how you arrived at the maximum indebtedness figure. This would not limit the council in the future, the urban renewal agency, from, I mean, you wouldn't have to spend at least $1 million. You could spend over $5.2 million if you're looking at the top one.
So the... We wouldn't have to?
You could choose to spend it differently. Again, the report is background for the plan. It explains how the plan numbers and the plan text was arrived at. It's the plan itself that is going to actually control the spending, and the plan contains the $18.4 million maximum indebtedness amount. It doesn't contain an exact maximum for any one project.
If I read it right, it doesn't refer to any dollar amounts associated with any of the projects. It's just the total.
Correct. It just has the total, and the dollar amounts are in the report, so the table that you pointed to.
So it's guidance, but it's not rule?
Correct.
Okay. So we could spend all of it on one project?
A future council could choose to do that.
Yeah. Okay. That's a little troubling. But the other thing that I wanted to talk about was something that's been in the record and something that's been carrying forward, which is something that's incorrect. And for the record, there's some confusion and actually some mythology running around that as a result of the service fee being voted down, nothing actually happened at the city and that we just carried on as if nothing happened, and that's simply not the case. And City Manager, can you talk to us about what actually did happen as a result of that for the record?
Yes, I can. Excuse me. And I'll try to be brief with this. What happened during the service fee conversation, there was $5.3 million worth of services that were not in my proposed budget for that year, based on the gap. And pending the outcome of the service fee conversation, the service fee conversation occurred. The voters said no to the service fee. What the Budget Committee did for that particular year was to not make those $5.3 million reductions at that moment, chose to take one-time money, primarily of our reserves, to fund that, pending a community process. You might remember, we went through a revenue team. There was the FIT team. There was five-plus community meetings around in the various neighborhoods. And the intent of that for the Budget Committee was to take all that input to then, to take a look at how best to close what would, a gap that would have occurred that following year, because everything else was, it was one-time funded going across. During that year, what happened, there was the PERS legislation that you remember that happened at the legislature, which actually reduced that gap. That subsequently has been overturned, but at the time, there was dollars in that place. We got a little bit better on property tax, and you might remember, we renegotiated our wholesale silt agreement. Based on all of that, that $5.3 million gap turned into a $2.5 million gap that needed to be closed at that time. And so some of the things that were used to close that gap that were ongoing, there was $300,000 worth of parks maintenance, for example, that was taken out of that. We also, at that time, reduced library funding, both for the downtown and Sheldon was put on a one-year funding for that one-time funding. And so that reduced it. There were some reductions in recreation services. There was 300-plus reductions in things like $350,000 in equity human rights neighborhood sustainability. That was an ongoing piece. There were, I mentioned parks maintenance. We also transferred, for example, our community events fund or payment to the central services sub-fund, and so that was a piece of that. There were some reductions in travel, memberships miscellaneous. That's Sister Cities at the time is when we reduced that as well as the neighborhood pieces. And then we also said we reduced the Human Services Commission discretionary payment by $250,000 from an ongoing and just put it on a one-time basis. And so actually, that came back around in this conversation in the budget. So all of that said, there are some reductions that have occurred that are still there as a result of that service fee. It's not the entire $5.3, based on what I talked about, but there is some ongoing reductions. The library subsequently, there's been a levy to backfill that. At the Budget Committee, the Human Services Commission, at least $200,000 of that is being proposed to be backfilled. The neighborhood piece has been proposed to be backfilled essentially as part of that as well as Sister Cities. So is that...
Right. Okay. Thanks. That was helpful. I think that's important to clarify, that there actually were cuts in parks maintenance, neighborhood services, library, Sister Cities, human services, and that actually did occur. As far as this project is concerned, when we voted on this in 2010, and I know Claire and Greg weren't here, but we made very clear intent about what we were talking about. And I'd just like to read what we wrote in 2010, which was that in the section that related to changes or future amendments to the urban renewal district, we said, quote, "It is the intent of this plan that there be no amendment substantial or otherwise. The purpose of the 2010 amendment is to limit any new project activities to the projects, and once these projects are completed and the debt is repaid or defees, to require the agency will notify the assessor to cease dividing taxes for the district. Except for these three projects, the LCC, for instance, the agency will not initiate additional projects to be funded with tax dollars after the date of this amendment." And I think that's very clear and unambiguous. I'd like another round to finish off.
Counselor Polling?
Thank you. I think Claire summed up most of my feelings quite well, actually. In reference to the vote in 2010, you know, it's been referred to as a promise, as a vow, as our, given our word. What it was, was a vote that set policy, basically. Based on the information we had at the time, based on the economy at the time, things change. And, you know, it's not chiseled in stone that life is going to continue the same way every day, but based on the changing economy and what's happened in the downtown, you know, the information we had then is nowhere near what it is today. So, you know, to me, looking at this and taking another run at it is the proper thing to do. The big project in 2008 that was referenced earlier, you know, that was a big chunk of downtown all at one time, and most of the money was going to go to private developers. This is, you know, a continuation of the incremental redevelopment of downtown, these projects that we have set forth now. And there's no developer that's going to pocket any money from it, and it's going to actually be for the public's good. So that is another positive there. I do have also some concerns about the LCC funding, and I'll wait to hear the conversation about that if Claire decides to throw out a motion on that. And then the part of the plan in there, the community engagement and project scoping, I particularly like, especially having, once the projects come up and they're ready to start, to come back to us to see the funding needed and if we go yes or no on that. Because as we know, if you come out with a set number for a project, before you start any real diving into the issues, that dollar amount can change one way or the other, and it's best not to lock us in on any dollar amount per project at this point.
Officer Pryor?
Thank you. I, too, would like to achieve as much specificity and clarity in the final dollar amounts as soon as we possibly can. I don't want to leave things up too ambiguously. So as we move forward, I would want to nail down costs, and I think we need to talk about what the LCC piece of that would be, because I think the $2 million is not going to be the right amount. And so I want to achieve that or reach that as quickly as possible. I think a good tool is a good tool. And I think if you have a tool that works, then you should continue to use that tool and use it as long as you can use it accountably and use it responsibly. And I think in our history, we have used urban renewal accountably and responsibly. I think the last time we used it in 2010, when I was here, so I was a part of that conversation, we were in a situation where the path forward was not as clear, I think, as it is now. There was more of a challenge to the school districts. There was a challenge to the county. There was a challenge to other areas. And we, I think rightly so, decided that we needed to go ahead because there were some great projects that could be accomplished. And when I look back on what we voted on in 2010 and what we have today, including the LCC building, the downtown commerce center, the police representation downtown, and the other projects that we have accomplished with that urban renewal vote, I don't have one second doubt that that was the right thing to do at the time. And I think now, the path forward is even more clear, because unlike 2010, we actually have the concurrence of all of our government partners: 4J, LCC, the county. Although LTD doesn't have an official status here, they have nevertheless supported it as well. Unlike 2010, we actually have the support of all the other partners to go forward. And so the path is more clear this time than it was last time. And I honor the fact that there are folks at the table who are passionately opposed to urban renewal. But I think there are also folks at the table that are also equally supportive of the use of that tool as a responsible and accountable part of how city government works. And so from that standpoint, I think the list of projects we have, the support we have from our partners, the amount of money that we're asking for, which is not unreasonable, I think are appropriate and reasonable, and that the tool is a good one in so much as it does not increase the amount of taxes being charged to a person that another tool might. And so for that reason, I am very supportive of us continuing to use urban renewal in this way.
Officer Taylor?
Thank you. At the time of the OPUS, the BRIG project, there was great support also for that, including a big majority of the council. And there was support in the community. But when it was put to the vote, the broad community did not support it. I think if we put this to the vote, you'll find that people in general will not support it. But urban renewal is a diver, doesn't make money. Some people think, seem to think it makes money. It's a diversion of money. And it's easy to get, it's easy to get the money into there, and it's easy to spend. And it's easy to get, it's easy to get the money into there, and it's easy to spend and without, it's hardly noticed when you spend it because it's already in that fund. And it, I think it's, I like to call it a slush fund. It is, the intention of urban renewal was to combat blight. And it's supposed to end. When you've, when you've taken care of the blight, it ends and presumably, you've increased the tax base because of urban renewal. I think we have misused it. I think it would be a misuse to continue it. And I do think that our vote to end it at a certain time meant something. If we, if we quit, if we stop this, the money would go back into the general fund and projects could compete with other projects. We might, for example, want to try to save the post office building. But I think that we should wait, if there's a need for something, then try to figure out how to do it, instead of saying, we want to do all these things because we want to keep urban renewal. Thank you.
All right, next round, we have Counselor Brown and Counselor Zelenka.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I have to disagree with Counselor Pryor. I think the way forward here, the path is not clear. It's muddy. I mean, we don't even know exactly what the projects are going to be with any certainty. We don't know how much any single one of these projects is going to cost. We have no idea. That will be determined, I guess, with some kind of public process and public meetings and public hearings. That's, that's not a way to run an urban renewal project. You have, you have specific projects, you have a pretty good idea what they're going to cost, and then you go and you do it. And oftentimes, as I refer to the voters, to get their validation, that they agree with the, the, the agency, which is us, agree with us, that, that, yes, these are priorities. But I think, you know, since we made that promise, we should do it that way. None of the, I mentioned before, none of the projects will increase the tax base. They're all, they're all public, public projects. They won't want to involve any improvements that would be able, you know, be taxable. And by the way, I'd like to point this out. It's not just 18.7 million dollars. If you look on page 16 of the plan, council, agenda page 50, the quote, "The contribution from the agency for projects is estimated at about $27 million." It's 27 million. It's not 18.7. This is money that's not going to go to the general fund. It's going to run 12 years. So, that's $27 million in 12 years that cannot be spent anywhere else in Eugene, except just in the downtown urban renewal district. The extra, what, you may go, well, gosh, what's, what's the extra $9 million for? Interest, premium, and other costs. I don't know what the other costs are. What are the other costs?
Mostly interest.
Interest, okay. And administration?
That's included.
That's included in the 18, yeah, okay. Well, anyway, what, my point is, in a way, this is kind of like MPT. This is foregone revenue. It's foregone revenue. We're giving it up for, the general fund is giving it up, can only be spent in this one area, only for these projects. But there again, the problem is, we don't know how much any one of these projects is going to cost. And we have nothing but the vaguest ranges, and they're wide, 1 million to 5 million. It's, it's just really not a very good way to approach a project when you have these ambiguities. I'll need another round also, please.
Counselor Zelenka?
Yeah, where I left off, I'll just reread that. "The agency will not initiate additional projects to be funded with tax increment dollars after the date of this 2010 amendment." I think that was a commitment. We knew there would be other projects. It was, and that, and that's exactly why we worded this the way that we worded it. And so, the fact that we knew there would be other projects and they were, we were not going to add other projects, is kind of a deal that we made so that we would, I think, fend off a referral at the time, and that we would, after these projects were done, terminate the district. And so, to me, that was a commitment, and it's a matter of integrity to me that we stick by that commitment. I intend to do that. The projects that are in this plan are good projects, and I support all of them, actually. But there's other ways to fund these projects. And, and one way to get around this commitment is for us to, is to, is to ask the voters if they agree with changing it. While I don't typically think we should go out and ask the voters about every controversial topic or issue that comes up, I do in this case. Finally, I understand this is going to pass, and so, the reason I asked the question of the city attorney about the spending guardrails is to find out if they were indeed guardrails. And they're apparently not because they're not in, they're, they're in the report and not in the plan. So, the specificity that we're putting forward is only the total amount. So, if we want to be more specific about this and allocate among the projects, we have to put that into the plan, is that correct? So, how would we actually go about doing that?
So, once the motion to adopt the ordinance is on the table, you could then move to, move to amend the plan, which is attached to the ordinance, so it's all part of the main motion, by adding specific dollar limits, if that's what you want to do for the particular projects. And if you decide you want to do that, I can help you draft a motion to amend.
So, you'd say like, up to $3 million for the high-speed fiber project?
Right.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, we're going to put a motion on the table.
I move to adopt Council Bill 5155 to amend the urban renewal plan for the downtown urban renewal district.
Seconded. Counselor Brown?
I have a, an amendment. I have a motion. Everyone has a copy. I'll go ahead and read it. "I move to amend the ordinance to, one, add the following language at the end of the ordinance title, quote, 'And referring the plan amendments to the electors of the city at the November 8, 2016 election,' end of quote. And, number two, add a new section three at the end of the ordinance that reads, quote, 'Section three: The provisions of Section 1 and 2 of this ordinance shall not become effective unless approved by the electors of the city of Eugene at the city election to be held concurrently with the statewide election on November 8, 2016.'"
Seconded.
Thank you. All right, I'd like to speak to this. I think this is essential that we do this. I know the counselors that feel strongly about passing this amendment, amended ordinance, and it will, I understand it will pass. We really did make promises in 2010. We gave our word. We, it mentions three places in that plan that this would be the last one. And I think that one reason that went, the 2010 amendment went so smoothly and was unopposed by referral was that there were, there were three good projects. They were very specific, the money amounts were very specific. Two of them came to fruition and seemed to be working very well. The only one that didn't, you know, get finalized was the $500,000 for farmer's market improvements. But LCC and paying off the debt at the garage to free up nine police officers for downtown, those were two good projects. And so, and we said that we're not, we don't need it anymore. Downtown doesn't need it anymore. Now, you know, it's possible to change your mind. I've changed my mind on a couple of things, once I did more research, more facts became apparent. But, and I would change my mind on this if I thought it was an emergency situation. It's not an emergency situation. The, the projects, you know, we've stated several times, can be funded other ways. I really feel we need to keep our word to the residents. I think that we should let people decide if their vision matches the majority of council's vision. Seek validation from them. I think it's really important. We know there's issues of trust among the residents in City Hall on several issues, not just one. This is, this would be an outstanding way to start restoring a lot of that trust that's been eroding the last few years. And I have no idea, I don't, would not dare to presume the outcome of the election. I have no idea. It could pass, it could fail. I honestly don't have the slightest idea. But I think it should be, you know, we've seen lots of supporters, we've gotten lots of emails, but you know what? We've gotten some people that oppose it also. And so, I really think that in order to regain some of the trust that we're, that has been eroding, and part of it is us going back on our word, that, you know, in 2010 saying, this will be the last time, I think that sending this to the ballot will go a very long ways towards restoring trust. Thank you.
Counselor Pryor, and then Counselor Evans.
Thank you. As I've said before, I think the, the notion of the promise is stronger in some people's minds than it is in others. And as I've said before, it's, I've gone back and looked at the minutes, and I don't see the sacredness of the promise as much in the minutes as I see a conversation very similar to the one that we're having today, where we review its different merits and its difference use, and as long as it can be used responsibly. Whether or not we can impose restrictions on future councils, that's also a point of conversation, and we all acknowledge that that can't be done. I think we are elected to study issues closely, to understand them, and then to be able to make the best choice that we can. And to kind of helicopter in and out of issues is a very difficult thing for people to do, particularly when you get around some very complicated things like tax increment financing, which is a very difficult issue to kind of just drop on people, ask their opinion, and then, and then jump back out again. We've never had to put urban renewal on the ballot before in all of the long history that's been talked about. We've done it because it's a good tool, that doesn't cost more taxes, and it achieves effective outcomes. We didn't in 2010, and we haven't before that. I can recall that there's other issues that have been equally controversial to the public, and, and we've not put them on the ballot, that have used the public's money more so than this would. Civic Stadium is the one that immediately comes to mind. I asked at the time, shouldn't we put this on the ballot? And by the people at this table, no, we don't need to do that. Well, that was a mini-million dollar of moving money decision that was decided by this council that it didn't need to be on the ballot. And now, in retrospect, that was a very complicated issue too, and required a lot of thought and study, and so, I went along with that. But there's many other examples of issues that don't need to be on the ballot because it's a regular tool, the city uses on a regular basis, and in my way of thinking, doesn't warrant having to do that. The second point, there are elements of this urban renewal proposal that will not only bring out opposition from the folks that I can anticipate bringing opposition from, but there's the inclusion of some very important elements in it that will draw big money from some corporate underwriters who will work very hard to defeat this. And I think that does not serve the public to have that take place. So, for those, for those reasons, and for the fact that we have a history of not putting things on the ballot, simply because they're controversial, because we have studied these issues, and we have looked at them carefully, and I think are making the balanced choice which a representative official should do, I think we should continue our regular, traditional policy of using urban renewal as a council tool. And we've not put it on the ballot before, why should we need to do that now?
Counselor Evans?
City manager, what is the cost of us putting in, this to the ballot? Does anyone know?
Sue, do you know that?
Uh, Beth might.
So, it would just be, you dropped it in?
Voter's pamphlet, and I don't.
Roughly 20,000 or so for the voter's pamphlet. Because it's a general election, there isn't any cost that we would normally pay for a special election.
Okay. Well, as Counselor Zelenka pointed out earlier, Counselor Cyret and I were not on the council in 2010 when this promise was made. I think that the projects that have been delineated for this particular urban renewal district all meet, from my perspective, the criteria that we need to make the kind of investments in the downtown core and continue the kind of investments that have yielded positive results. I call your attention to that ugly thing across the street called the butterfly lot. I call that blight. If you look at the old LCC building, that could probably sit for years and not be refurbished or reutilized. We've talked about the park blocks in and out, year after year after year, before I came on council and since I've been on council, what we need to do to upgrade and improve our downtown, you know, look and, you know, the attractiveness of downtown so that people can feel comfortable and safe in coming into downtown. That's another issue. I wasn't too crazy about that, but, you know, I can live with that. And then, one of the most important features of this is the fiber issue. And this is one of those, you know, layup situations where, hey, if we can put this money into investing in downtown fiber, we can do, go a long way of leveraging public investment that will create both private, a private benefit as well as a full-time public benefit with creating the platform and basis for us to have a high-tech sector downtown that will, we will benefit from years to come, and including the additional benefit of job creation, because this will create jobs. This will sustain our downtown, and this will rehabilitate the kind of progress that we've had before.
I just wanted you to know when you're doing this, you're...
I'm, I'm forgotten. But getting, all right, I'm getting too excited, so. But anyway, it's, it's good for us all the way around, and I would rather us use this tool and do it in the way that we're doing, doing it, because people elect us to make tough decisions. So, let's make some tough decisions.
Counselor Brown?
Well, I just feel I need to go back just a second, and, you know, we, we did refer one urban renewal project to the ballot in 2007. I think the comparison with Civic Stadium is not particularly valid. You know, we ended up spending 4 million, but the reason it didn't go to the ballot is because we didn't know how much, there were problems. We didn't, we couldn't know how much 4J wanted. We had no idea during the process. We couldn't put a specific amount on the ballot, so that, that wouldn't have worked. And I'd be curious to know what, if you can point out to me, Counselor Pryor, after the meeting, what the corporate money is, the big corporate money that's all set to oppose this. I have no idea how ballot, how, how the vote would turn out, honestly. I haven't got the slightest idea. I just feel like, you know, this is a $27 million project. It's not 18.7, it's 27 million. And I feel that we need public buy-in on this. Now, if it passes, passes by a good amount, great, that's great. I personally wouldn't like to see that, but if that's how the majority of the electors, you know, think that pursuing these projects is the way to go, that's fine. That's fine. But I think that really, you know, it, things haven't changed. That, the, the projects that were finished from the 2010 plan turned out to be really good. And, you know, we made a promise then. And if we break our promise, we're going to increase public mistrust in City Hall. And I, personally, that makes me sad. I, I feel like I want the city council to be trusted. I want City Hall to be, to be trusted by, by the residents. And I see us moving away from that if we don't refer this to the ballot. And like I said, I have no idea what the outcome will be. But for us not to, it's like, gee, whatever happened to democracy here? I mean, the citizens surely... I mean, the citizens surely yet, yet should, should have some input here, whether they validate our decision or not. I think that's really important, to have the citizens ratify what we think is, is the majority thinks is a good decision. And so that's, that's why I made this motion, and I certainly hope that you guys will support it and move it to the ballot.
Thank you. So I think this is an important discussion, and I do have real concerns about the major corporate power that will be very unhappy that we are looking to create a publicly-financed fiber-optic network downtown with the expectation to expand it to the rest of our community. So I think that's really important, to remind folks that we're not imagining this as something that's just going to happen downtown, and then that's it, we're done. At some point in the future, we're going to look to create that public utility that services citizens throughout the city, and that is a real threat to private corporate interests like Comcast, who have lots of money to kill our efforts. So for me, that's, that's a real red flag. I also agree that we are elected to consider these issues, to weigh the consequences pro and con, and to make decisions on behalf of the voters, and that is the democracy that we work within. We are not a plebiscite. We do not refer all of our questions out to the voters, that we're not Vermont. You know, so that's the form of democracy we have here in this community, and while it can put us in an uncomfortable position sometimes, that's, you know, what we stepped up to do as city councilors. And then I did want to ask the city attorney, so this statement that was put into the plan by council in 2010, is it legally binding on a current city council?
It's legally binding unless it's changed as part of the process that you're going through. It's like any other ordinance that you adopt. The ordinance is legally binding, but the council under the charter retains the power to change it.
So we would be amending the plan which would remove that past statement?
Correct.
Okay. I don't know if you were the city attorney at the time that this was debated, but are you able to recall if the council in 2010 was informed that that eventuality could occur?
I can't say with 100% certainty, but I can say it with about 95% certainty that I would have said that, just like almost every time the council says something about, okay, this is legally binding, and it's like, yes, it's legally binding unless a future council changes it.
Yeah.
And so I'm almost positive I would have said it back then.
And I can hear you saying it.
But with a younger voice.
Exactly. So, I mean, I absolutely appreciate that the council at the time was sincere in that direction, and I understand the consternation of councilors who were on the council at that time at, you know, going back quote-unquote on that commitment. But, you know, it, I, again, I'll repeat, I kind of resent the fact that you made that decision for councilors who were yet to be elected to bring another perspective and a look at what's happening now today, and what are our needs for downtown today.
Counselor Pryor, and then Counselor Clark.
Thanks. I'm happy to answer the question. Actually, Counselor Cyret answered it partially. I did a little bit of homework when somebody had raised the red flag for me, and discovered that there was some significant money spent by cable and internet providers in Colorado, in states in the east, and also defeated a pro-fiber mayor candidate in Seattle, and defeated a fiber effort there. So there is actually a history of big money being spent to defeat fiber proposals that have been put out for public funding. So I'm not, I'm not making it up. And the second thing is, interestingly, with regard to the Civic Stadium, actually, there were a number of folks who felt there had been a promise made when the bond was passed, that the money would be used to acquire and develop parks, not stadiums, not that kind of, but parks. And while we reinterpreted that, and we, as a council, have the right to reinterpret that as long as it's within the legal guardrails, there were a number of people who felt that a promise had been broken to them, that that bond would be used for more specific purposes. And I don't want to argue the strict interpretation of whether a promise was or was not made, because I, in the end, voted to support the purchase of Civic Stadium. So I, with full consciousness and awareness, reinterpreted that to some degree, and I'm still comfortable with that choice. I'm still comfortable with that choice. And so in this point, once again, I am comfortable with the choice to go ahead and continue to use this, because I think it is the right thing to do. And I guess that's really, for me, what it boils down to. I think at the end of the day, this is the right thing to do, to get the right outcome. And I think, for me, that will be what I'll always stay focused on, because in years from now, they'll look at what the result was. And I think using this tool to get this in this way will be the right outcome that I can support.
I guess the only thing that I would add to that is that, and I think it sometimes becomes an unfortunate part of our conversation about trust, but I think the fact is that the type of government we have, and the way that you can change ordinances, or that you can change laws, or you can make things evolve over time, was put in place for the very purpose of new information coming, and people being able to make new decisions. Things that were made back in 1950 are not in cement for 2016, so that's just the nature of the way our government was set up in order to be more, more flexible. But I certainly understand that some folks around the table feel very strongly that they themselves individually committed to a particular perspective, and I think that is admirable too.
Yep.
Okay, Counselor Clark.
Thank you, Mayor. Just to be technical, we're a republic and not a democracy. We keep saying that over and over again, but, you know, there's actually kids in the audience tonight and at home who really ought to hear the actual truth.
Specifics 101.
Yeah. The, the interesting thing to me is that, as most people are aware, you hear the phrase that the two things you never want to see made are, are, you know, sausage and, and laws, right? This is why, is because the, the process is never clean, it's never a simple choice, it's never black and white, and it's never all of one or all of the other. There are oftentimes good and bad pieces of a complex thing that were asked to vote either yes or no. And I think it's, it's always funny to me when people interpret someone's binary vote as meaning that they, they believe something, or that they, they have some set of beliefs, when in reality, there are a lot of times like this one. Some things you feel great about, parts of the complex thing on the table, and some parts you don't feel great about, but you have to vote yes or no. I can say from my personal experience, in 2010, I'd never made the promise out loud, this goes away, and that I'm happy with that. We didn't have the right to make that promise, because no council ever has a right to bind a future council, period. And to make that promise is silly in the first place, but it was a necessary part of the package so that everybody felt good about the process. And that's what I wanted to see the projects go forward, so I voted yes. But it's important also to remember that the manager did exactly that. The manager did not bring the district forward to be renewed. He complied with what that council asked him to do as the manager for the city. And he said, no, as far as I, you know, I have direction from this council not to renew this. It was only that we made a motion, I made a motion in December to say, hey, let's use this for the fiber. That's how the discussion got started, because the manager and the city's staff perspective was, the council directed us for this to be done, and we're gonna. So we complied, and the city's staff complied with the, what the council at that time directed. But we made a different decision about how we wanted to move forward today, because it makes sense, and I'm glad to see us moving forward.
Counselor Brown, then we're going to vote.
Okay. Thank you for bringing up the specter of the telecom companies jumping in on a vote on urban renewal. I had honestly no idea what you're talking about. Thanks for clarifying that. You know, they don't have to be involved. We don't need to pass this ordinance. Every single one of these projects can be funded otherwise. And if you think back to the sheet that I provided with several different scenarios, we can fund the fiber-optic project without urban renewal district staying in effect. And we, we use telecom funds, actually, and we use part of the million dollars a year that goes back to the general fund. Remember, if, just think back to the outline. There's other ways we can fund the fiber project. You know, full faith and credit bond, and, and it's paid off in five years. We used the combination of telecom funds and urban renewal, what used to be urban renewal money that is now going to the general fund. So we can do the fiber-optic project, no problem, and we don't need to amend the current urban renewal plan. These other projects, we don't even know what the project is at the City Hall site. It's, I mean, fixing the cracks in the sidewalks, please, isn't, I mean, Public Works can do that. The LCC building in 2010, I remember, we, I remember specifically, I remember that meeting. We, we said no. The manager wanted, wanted to buy that building for a million dollars, and we all said no.
For a dollar.
It was for a dollar.
A dollar.
Not a million dollars. That was a good story.
Well, what we all, but the point is, we all were fearful of another pit, and, and we said no. No. Definitively said no. And I don't see that the need has changed since then. I think LCC is perfectly capable of marketing that building to somebody. They may not get the price that they want, that the urban renewal district would pay them, but isn't this the free market? I mean, whatever happened to the vaunted free market here? Why can't LCC, they're, you know, they've got all these plans to build apartments and stuff. We saw the presentation a couple of years ago, out at the main campus, housing for staff and instructors, you know, and, and commercial. They, they are capable of handling their, their own real estate dealings. So that shouldn't be a part of our decision in the fiber optic we can do without amending the urban renewal plan. I think it's a really bad mistake to move ahead with it.
Counselor Taylor.
I find it amusing that we're fighting big money now. I didn't know that's what this was all about. But I did want to make a correction about Civic Stadium, that Parks Bond was to buy land, and that was buying land, so we did not go back on what the Parks Bond was for. Also, it's, it seems pointless to talk about it, because I know this is going to pass, but I, the only reason the last one passed was because a part of it was the promise that that would be the end, and that's the only reason it went through, I did, and the only reason it wasn't fought vigorously. Thank you.
Okay, we're ready to vote on Counselor Brown's amendment. All those in favor, please indicate. 1, 2, 3, and opposition, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5. It goes down. Now, we're back to the main motion. Counselor Cyret.
I'd like to put a motion to amend. I've moved to amend to raise the amount of the spending limit by an additional million dollar to be added to the LCC project.
Your second?
I'll second.
Moved and seconded.
So, thank you. And the reason that I'm asking for this is, as I mentioned, I had an opportunity to sit down with Mary Spildy of LCC, and she reiterated her support, obviously, for our partnership on the project for the LCC building, which would be, you know, a public-public partnership, but it would be serving to create an innovation hub that will actually serve private businesses that are seeking to find expansion space for biotech, food production, as well as arts component. And they also intend to revitalize that storefront on the street and put some retail in there. So would certainly qualify in my mind as a strong urban renewal project. But the concern is that the moderate level of support that we agreed to at our last meeting might not be sufficient, and I'd rather not potentially pull from one of the other projects we've identified in order to fill a gap if we get to the point where they've scoped that out in more detail and come to us and say, gosh, it would really make a huge difference if we could have the, the $3 million level instead of the $2 million level. So that's why I've put this motion out, and I hope other councilors will support it.
Counselor Pryor.
Yeah, so first, the question, what you're doing is, you're proposing to change the spending limit from the 18.4 to 19.4?
Correct.
Okay. I probably will absolutely support that, because I do think we need to raise it, and I think LCC is a principal reason for doing it. The only question I would have is, I'm not even sure that the three really will be enough. So in supporting that, I, I think it's, I think, I think that's great. But as we have the additional conversations, we may find that we may have to move a little bit. But I, hopefully, it will not impose too much on any of the other projects. But I like where you're going. I would like to keep the amount under $20 million, so I think that's absolutely great. So I think, though, at what you're proposing, I can fully support that with the expectation we may need to continue a little fine-tuning. So thank you for putting that forward.
Counselor Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. So what is, what is that money going to be used for at the LCC? Is the city going to own the project and, and develop it, or just give a whole bunch of money to LCC to, to build retail and artist space and wet labs and all these other wonderful things? What is the plan there?
The specifics of the project, we talked about in a previous work session, and it's really partnering with LCC to develop it into all of those things that you mentioned, wet labs, innovation space, and basically just kind of doing a whole remake of that building into the innovation hub, and, so it's not owning the building.
Mm-hmm. I've never understood why, why LCC couldn't partner with a private company and do that, somebody like Beam or, you know, who could get loans and, and build the building, like the, like the Broadway Commerce Center was done with loans and their own equity, and it was not direct payments of urban renewal money, of people's tax money. So I, I can't support this. It's, it's going to raise the total amount, oh gosh, now, it would be up to around $28 million over the 12 years. I think it's already out of hand, and this just makes it more so. Thank you.
Counselor Clark.
This is a fantastic project. This community has talked, and this council has talked over and over and over again, especially in economic development conversations, about what we call the brain drain. People come here to go to the university and attend LCC, and then there's not something specifically for them, so they end up leaving our community. This is an opportunity to put that educated, young mind to work in a new space and help create that connection between an innovative new product and a new industry in our city that's born here, and the people who are learning those new skills and those new trades at the same time. It makes perfect sense, and especially in our downtown, that's becoming more and more about that. So I'm absolutely fine with the idea of supporting this, because it's the exact right thing to do. It's the exact thing we've been talking about as intelligent for years, and we're just now finally getting to the place where we're putting it into action.
Counselor Zelenka.
Two things. One, Glenn, just a heads up, if you could help me craft language to put caps on everything, I think that probably goes in Section K or something like that. Second is, I really like this project. I think it's very innovative and potentially a game-changer for a lot of people's lives in, in terms of jobs and things like that. Again, my no votes aren't about the projects. They all have merit, they all are good projects, they all have different, different opportunities to be funded other than urban renewal. My no vote is about the commitment that I believe that I made in 2010. So when it comes back around, I'll ask to make another amendment after Claire's.
I just wanted to add to what Counselor Clark and others have said, is that when we've asked folks what's missing within our ecosystem, one of the things they point out is wet lab space. It's a really big component that everybody sees a need for more of. So I think that's really an important piece, if we're able to help make that happen, I think that's great. And I also think that we have, I've visited several of them, many of us want better maker space. We have little bits of it here and there, but we don't have anything substantial in that line. So, and that's another component that would really be helpful, because, as I try to say every time we have this conversation, the real thing here, and the real reason we want to keep people working here, is because we want our families to thrive. We want people to be able to make a good living and stay here and raise their families and to pay good taxes that will support... and to pay good taxes that will support all the things that we need in our community. So this is all about families of Eugene and a way to make them do better. So I just wanted to, in this particular project, I think it hits a lot of it right on the mark. So I think we're ready to vote on Counselor Saret's amendment.
Mayor, right before you vote. So the amendment that Counselor Saret has offered is really conceptual in nature. We're trying to work out exactly which numbers on which pages will be amended, and so we'll have that for you shortly.
Okay.
But we'll need to say, on this page, 18.4 was amended to...
So can we do the motion now, or do we need to wait for you to...
You can do it, and then we'll just, before you take final action on the ordinance, we'll give you the exact changes.
Okay, all right. So all those in favor of Counselor Saret's amendment, please indicate. 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 in opposition. 1, 2, 3, it passes. All right, so now we're back to the main motion again. And you, Counselor Zelenka?
Yeah, so what I think, something would be helpful for this, and also with regard to building trust, is to actually have in the plan some caps that we are intending to put in here. And I'm not exactly sure how to do that, Glenn, but something along the line...
If you'll give me the numbers, I'll tell you where the language should get added. So what are the caps that you would like?
Well, the caps that are in Table 5, with the exception of the LCC building being $3 million now.
Okay, then I think what you would want to do, if you go to Council Packet, page 21, which is the plan, under Section A, we've got a sentence, I think it's the second sentence, "Beginning with the effective date of the 2016 amendment, the agency will also be able to use tax increment funds in the plan area to help create and improve permanent farmer's market." Insert the words, "not to exceed $3 million..."
$4 million. Amanda, where are we with LCC?
That's, you said farmer's market. Okay, so not to exceed $4 million, because we're only talking about tax increment funds here, so not to exceed $4 million, continuing the sentence, "as well as to improve any public parks, public plazas, restrooms, open spaces, streets and sidewalks in the plan area." Insert, "not to exceed $5.2 million." And then on the next page, at the end of, under subsection B, at the end of that sentence, add the language, comma, "not to exceed $3 million of tax increment funds." And then under subsection C, it says, "The agency may provide," insert, "up to $3 million of tax increment funds as part of the redevelopment." So that would put those limits into the plan. As a, without amending the plan, the council would not be able to spend more than that.
Okay, so moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second, moved to the seconded. Counselor Pryor?
Just as a question, my impression is that the LCC building can't be done for three. So the language somehow needs to reflect, at least within that one element, the flexibility to increase that amount. Otherwise, we need to change the cap to an amount higher than that to be able to accommodate what we think LCC will actually be. So I'm cool with caps. I think that's actually a good idea. But what I don't want to do is create and limit us to an amount that we know, as of today, is probably not going to be adequate for the LCC project. So I would be interested in how we can make that language work so that it can be maybe a range or something like that. On all the other ones, we can have a "not to exceed," and I'm cool with that. But for the LCC one, if you want to have language that caps it, I think you're going to have to cap it at an amount higher than $3 million.
I've got Counselor Clark, Counselor Taylor, and Counselor Zelenka.
Did you want to speak to that?
Well, I don't quite understand, because it has to be 19.4 million. So if the totals don't add up to 19.4 million, is that okay?
It would be okay, because these are not to exceeds. They're not to exceed numbers, yeah.
If one of them were to come in less, say we got a grant for $1 million for IC's fiber, that frees up another $1 million.
That's what I was trying to get at. If you create an LCC "not to exceed," that's, say, $6 million. I don't think it'll be six, but if you create a "not to exceed," that, I think, would allow us to have the flexibility that I'm looking for.
So if that $3 million now, what would be your, do you have a friendly amendment?
I would make a friendly, and in conversations with folks from LCC, they're still trying to finalize their numbers, so I would say a "not to exceed" of six. I think that's high, but it's, that's the cap above which we would not go. And I recognize that a "not to exceed six" means we'd have to look for flexibility in other places, but I don't want to go in with a "not to exceed" number that's impossible to reach.
But that would not add to the overall amount?
But would not add to the overall, and I'm with you there. The whole point of this is not to add to the overall amount.
So six seems like a little higher than where we were. Would you think five?
Let's give it a good chance, and you think about what you want to do with this. Okay, so I've got Counselor Clark, Counselor Taylor...
Thank you.
Zelenka, Evan, Saret.
No, I didn't need to put myself in the case.
We had a colleague at the table who will remain nameless for a very long time, who often would engage the council in debate, only to vote no at the end on the thing that they substantively changed along the way, which I always thought was funny. So am I understanding my colleague's going to vote yes for this, once we substantively change it to your comfort level?
I'll vote for the yes on the amendment.
Well, if you'll forgive me, I'm not necessarily interested in going along with changing up this whole thing so that you can vote no on it. Personally, that's just me. One of the other things I would say is that the whole reason I put in and asked specifically for the section on how we work with the community on each individual project on an individual approval basis was to address these very issues, and frankly, not to tie our hands, to be able to say, "This is the cap under which everybody's comfortable, because we know the general idea of where we're going." But that we may need to be flexible one way or another, just like we are being today at some point in the future when more is known about the action time on each of these specific projects. So I'm not really inclined to start limiting what some future council may or may not want to do with each of these projects. Thank you.
Counselor Taylor?
A question for the attorney. Would this bind a future council in a couple of years, for example, when there might be some new people on the council?
Nope. It would be binding on a future council unless the council went through the same process you're going through now to adopt an ordinance to amend the plan.
So what's the point? They can change it if they want to. Thank you.
Counselor Zelenka?
Well, the reason is not so I can vote for it. I think the reason is twofold. One is that it is, I think, good public policy to have the actual dollars in the plan that we're talking about, and not merely just having the projects be just pure guidance. I mean, and then secondarily, so I think that having it be more specific is better. It's always better to have more specificity in things like this, in my mind, if we're going to have one of these plans. The second reason to vote for it is that it would require then the city council to go through a public process to amend the plan, change the ordinance, get public input, and as we've done to this point, and so getting all of that input and then determining whether or not we wanted to change the plan that we're currently are thinking about, would require us to then go through the whole ordinance procedure as we've done with this. So it does put some guardrails on it. It doesn't bind future councils, but it does talk about our intent, and it does bind the staff until the council changes it. And it requires public process to change it.
Counselor Evans?
Nothing is binding if we decide to change our minds. So bottom line is this, I thought it would be more comfortable if we had some flexibility in terms of this, that we capped the total amount of spending at, to not to exceed $20 million. That would be, give me more comfort in terms of this, instead of us having our hands tied project-specific. Then we would have the ability to, you know, or the staff would rather, would have the ability to react to the changes that are inherent in terms of the projects that would be coming forward like this.
Yeah, I just want to make it clear that actually the council would have to approve any appropriation of any of these dollars, regardless of what the caps are, and so you'll be, yeah, you'll be dealing with all of these again.
Ready to vote on, go ahead.
I'll accept Chris's friendly amendment of a cap on the LCC building up to $6 million. So if that's okay with the second. Okay.
Okay, ready to vote on this? All those in favor of Counselor Zelenka's amendment, please indicate. 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 in opposition. 1, 2, 3, it passes. Okay, so now we're back to the main motion as amended.
Two things before I give you the detail. In light of the conversation you have had about the language in the prior plan, I wanted to at least highlight for you that on page 18 of your packet, in Section 100, at the end of the paragraph, there's a sentence that says, "Except for these projects, the agency will not initiate additional projects to be funded with tax increment dollars after the date of this 2016 amendment." So I just want you to know that that intent is here. If you want it here, it's fine. If you don't want it here, you should do something about it. In terms of the specifics to implement Counselor Saret's motion, let me walk you through those. So generally, we are raising amounts in the plan and the report by $1 million. So on page 13, and I'm just going to refer to Packet pages, so page 13, which is the ordinance, 18.4 million becomes 19.4 million, 65 million becomes 66 million. On page 25, no amendment, on page 26, Section 1400, again, 18.4 million becomes 19.4 million, 65 million becomes 66 million. On page 47, and now we're into the report, first paragraph, 18.4 million becomes 19.4 million, 22.1 million becomes 23.1 million. On page 49, which is Table 5, the old LCC building estimate, which was 1 to 2 million, becomes 1 to 3 million. Total funding goes from 22.15 million to 23.15 million, and the note at the bottom of the page, 18.4 million becomes 19.4 million. And let's see, tables. Page 51, 18.4 million again goes to 19.4 million, and in Table 6, the same change for the old LCC building. On page 52, where is this? 18.4 million becomes 19.4 million, and then you have, is it just one table, Amanda? Table 7? Table 7, which appears on page 64 of your packet, becomes this. That's getting passed around. Thank you. Well, sir. Thank you. Also, in Table 6, the $65 million number becomes 66 million. So that are the specific changes that were made as a result of Counselor Saret's amendment that you already passed.
Thank you. Counselor Foley?
Glenn, I have one real quick question. I realize this was all done on the fly. If tomorrow there's a page or a table that somebody overlooked, is that something that we can take care of real quick at our work session or the next meeting, or how would we go about making that correction if there was something missed?
We would ask you to move to reconsider the adoption of the ordinance on Wednesday, which would put this back on the table. You would move to amend the plan to fix those and then adopt it again.
All right, thank you.
All right, I think we're ready to vote on this motion as amended. All those in favor, please indicate. 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 in favor, in opposition, 1, 2, 3, it passes. So before we closed down the work session, I wanted to bring up something, and this really, going through this urban renewal thing really made me think about it, and so has the City Hall thing. And I know you talked about it during budget session, but I think this is another good opportunity to really think about it. I think we need, and I don't think it would be hard, to have a transcript of our council meetings verbatim, so that you can, people can read it on paper, so that everybody's comments are there and are accountable to them. I don't think you need a recorder to do that, a person like we used to have. I think the technology is available, where we could actually just take the minutes from the meeting and transcribe them like that. And I just think we ought to do it, and we ought to do it as quickly as we possibly can, because I think if there's one thing that will help with transparency and belief in what we say, is that people have access to the very words that came out of our mouths. So I hope somebody, one of you, will consider this and make a motion accordingly, and let's get back on the track of actually having minutes that people can actually pull up and read and know exactly what each of you said in a meeting and what staff shared with you and all of that stuff, without having to go listen to it. So that's my, I think it's really, really important.
I think it's part of the budget that we just passed.
And I just think we need to get it, I think in the budget, it's a recommendation to just, and you guys picking it up and saying, "Okay, let's do something about it right now," and giving staff direction to do that. I don't think it's expensive, and I think it's important, and I think it'll really help us with some of the things that we're struggling with right now with the community.
Keep people aligned about what we said, too.
Okay, see you at 7:30.